Appeals to Order for October the 13th at 7:37.
Can you speak up, Al?
7:37. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The microphones are just for the -- just to let you know, the microphones are not for us. They are for the TV, the viewing audience at home.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for coming. I know it looks like we're pretty full tonight. So we're going to do our best I can to get through the agenda. And then we will do continued hearing first, then we'll move on to the new hearing. I don't believe these microphones amplify. Maybe they do amplify.
There you go.
Does that amplify now? Do they amplify?
They do.
They do? I guess this is new. Okay. All right. So next on our agenda would be the acceptance of minutes for August the 25th and September the 8th.
Can I make a motion to accept the minutes of Tuesday, September 8th?
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those may.
I'm not going to vote on the October 25th minutes as I was not here.
All right. So we'll let the record reflect you did not vote on October 25th. You did vote on September 8th?
Oh, October 25th?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Did I say October?
Yes.
But I'll declare that to be approved. And just one other order of business, or two other orders of business. Alexandria is absent. She's excused absent tonight. And I'd also like to welcome our newest member. Thanks. Thanks for participating. This is your first day on the job, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, welcome. This will be an interesting night. Next on our agenda is the committee reports Housing Partnership Report. Ms. McIntyre, do we have any?
No, we don't.
Okay.
I'm still waiting to find out to see if that is actually still partnership.
Yeah. I don't think it's been disbanded, right?
No, it isn't.
So they still remain.
Not that I'm aware of, unless they told me. Everyone else but me.
Yeah, maybe. All right. Next, number four is for discussion is the meeting schedule for 2016 that will be posted as it relates to application deadlines, the dates of our regular meetings. It's not necessarily any special meetings which we may call. So that's the schedule. And I do think room assignments will be changing as of January when they'll be doing some construction in this building. So we may either wind up over at the new school administrative building or maybe at the senior center where we've logged a lot of hours in the past. So we're still working on that. But that's our meeting schedule. Next, we'll go to the continued public hearing for Jose Resendiz for 3335 Third Street, MAP 30, parcel 21, petition 2015. I think Mr. Sullivan is here. This is continued hearing from last time to convert a two-family to a four-family unit, although I do believe some materials came in amending the requests. Now, just one other procedural matter on this before we go forward. At the last hearing, when I was addressing a matter for Mr. Smith that's next on the agenda tonight, I had made a disclosure under Chapter 268A that I had had -- Mr. Smith had done some work with me, some architectural work with me, maybe back about 10 years ago or more, probably longer as it related to Mr. Smith. Although, it didn't occur to me until after the fact that Mr. Smith is in fact the architect on this hearing for you and for your client. So while I did make it, I think everybody was here, I didn't specifically make it with respect to your petition. And I do want to put it on the record as it relates to that. I had done some work for him too. But we haven't had any kind of business relationship for very long time. That being said, if your client would like me to recuse myself from participating in this hearing, I'm certainly happy to do so. You have more than enough members. Otherwise, I don't believe there's any reason whatsoever why I couldn't be objective with respect to what's being proposed tonight. So I just want to make my disclosures as required.
We have no problem with you staying on to --
For this hearing. Okay. All right. Mr. Cafrey. Is Mr. Attorney Cafrey here? Do you have any issues with that yet? Okay. All right. So having taken care of that order of business, you have a new proposal or you've amended your proposal?
For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. And based on our last meeting where we received some comments from the board and also members of the public, we've come in with a new plan tonight. Previously, as everyone knows, it's an existing two-family structure. It was proposed to be converted internally to four units and eight parking spaces would be provided on-site. Based on the comments we received, we had a meeting with the owner and we're reducing our proposal to three units. So there'll be six parking spaces on-site. So this new proposal reduces the number of units by one, reduces the amount of impervious area on-site, it reduces the on-site parking by two spaces. If the board remembers, the existing two-family home has nine bedrooms total. With three units, there'll be a total of eight bedrooms. So there'll be one net reduction in bedroom count for this structure.
I thought you had six bedrooms.
Right.
Actually, this is for us to discuss. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, you know, let's just talk about how we're going to -- so the applicant, their petition, they have an opportunity to come and present. They're going to present all the materials to the board. The board's going to ask them questions. At some point, we will open up again if we allow any new public comment. There was a substantial amount of public comment from the last time. If there's anything new to be added as it relates to a new, an amended proposal, we can certainly welcome that. But I will want to deal with statutory abutters first. And if we have time, we'll get to anybody else. A statutory abutter is whoever received notice by certified mail of the petition is listed on the certified abutter list within 300 feet of the lot line. Okay? Just so you know. And then if you have any questions, you can raise them in the context of addressing the board. And then we'll give Mr. Sullivan an opportunity to respond to the questions that come up. Okay?
Okay. I think what I'll do is I'll focus on the site specifics, the engineering analysis on this. I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith to talk about the floor plans and how everything will be laid back out. In his key plan, it does show existing count nine bedrooms, proposed count eight, but I'll let him address that. But some other site changes that we made on the site, there was some concern where would trash barrels be stored. Behind the existing two-car garage, we're showing a six-foot-high stockade fence to be placed and barrels will go into that area. Recycling bins and barrels will be placed behind the garage in a fenced-in enclosure. We also showed along Third Street where the proposed parking spaces are. We did show some plantings to be put in. There is an existing hedgerow that's in the right-of-way in that area. We're showing some proposed evergreen-type plantings to be planted, a total of six, to screen the parking spaces. At the last meeting, we talked about maybe even exploring some different type of surfacing for the parking spaces. We feel with the reduction of the unit and the reduction of two units that the conventional asphalt parking is sufficient in this area. There's no history of drainage problems. And as I stated at the last hearing, technically, he could go in tomorrow and pave that area without a permit. That there's no, it's not in the watershed. It's not in a --
Is that still proposed new asphalt off of the Third Street where you're showing spaces three, four, five, and six?
Correct. Correct. And there was a concern last time off of Maple Avenue that there's two garage spaces in the garage. There was a third space we were showing just to the right of the existing garage, but that has been removed. Informally, people still may park there, but we're not showing it as an official parking spot for this project.
So the spots labeled one and two in the garage, you were counting them as parking?
Correct.
Last time. Are you still counting them?
I'm still counting them as parking.
Okay.
And --
Only within the garage itself, not?
Right. It'll be enclosed parking in the garage units. In the garage door on the right-hand side, following last meeting, I went and did a site inspection with the owner based on some of the comments I was hearing. And the right-hand side garage door is in need of repair. It has to be replaced, and the owner will replace it.
Yes.
And he does have a tarp on the roof. He'll re-roof it as well. I know that might be a little bit outside of our hearing tonight, but I just wanted to let you know, he's going to make those improvements.
So can I ask, why are you showing the parking off of Third Street? And if you explained this already, I apologize. As opposed to building on where it was with the existing garage?
Well, to have a conventional, we need a nine-by-18 parking space. And if you put spaces in front of the garage, they would overhang into the public way. I think that was Ms. McIntyre's concern with the third spot we previously showed. I think there was a concern that there'd be some overhang onto Maple Avenue. So if you look at the site plan on Third Street, there's already an existing curb cut at that location. And there's a driveway on that side existing. We're expanding that to provide the additional parking. But the curb cut's already in place. It's more just formalizing that area with some additional pavement for some additional parking spaces. We would have had to make the curb cut even wider on Maple Avenue to try to accommodate spaces. And you can see the building is only 22, a little over 22 feet off the right-of-way. That's kind of green, open space right now. We wanted to leave it as such.
So there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting also about the historical aspect of the vegetation and the landscape. And I heard, you know, I recollect there being a considerable amount of discussion in terms of this yard sort of being on the cusp of that district. Could you elaborate a little bit on what, if anything, you've done to address the landscaping in relation to what was raised about the historic?
I think what, Mr. Chairman, what came out of the last meeting is Machine Shop Village is in the historic area, where a few blocks outside of that district. But you can see on my site plan, I tried to show all mature trees, existing stone walls, the tree line. We're not proposing any tree removal for the construction of the additional parking spaces. Really, there'll be minor grading changes to get the parking lot to go into place. And we don't have to go in front of the planning board, I think I brought this up last time, for any sort of site plan approval. If you create five or more spaces, you have to go to the planning board. For this project, they already have four. Actually, they had five. And we're having a total of six. So there's a net increase of one or two parking spaces for this project. But that's why I tried to show some of the existing site detail. We're not, it's not like we're taking down trees. We're not really held to landscaping changes. There's really no permit for that. And a abutter could come in, cut down whatever trees they wanted to if they were on their property. They could regrade their yard. But we've made an effort to demonstrate with this plan, there's no trees to be cut. And it's really just an expansion of the existing driveway. And again, we're not making any sort of footprint change to the existing building. Everything will be internal. The owner's aware that he has to satisfy the building inspector, bring this up to state building code. It's going, if it does get approved as a three-family, it's going to have to meet the state requirements for a three-family. We're going to put in a fire suppression system. And I'm sure Jerry will have a lot of comments during the review. And Mr. Smith is aware of the changes he needs to make.
I do recollect, though, the woman from the historical district, name escapes me at the moment, but talking about the vegetative state, you know, if you will, of that area, sort of where the parking is. You know, I'm just wondering, how was what you're proposing, and I realize there's no regulation for it, but how was what you're proposing taken into account what was mentioned?
Well, it's really, it's really a grassed area. So it's, there's no, I wouldn't say there's landscaping importance to the grass. If there were mature trees, let's say there was a 40-inch maple tree, that was a prized tree, and we were going to cut it down, we would look to reconfigure the parking to try to save that tree. That's what I typically do. I try to take existing landscape features. I don't really look at a grassed area. It is landscaping, but it's not a significant, if there was a tree that, oh, wow, that tree's been around 70 years, we should protect it. We're more than willing. We're not proposing to cut any trees. We're not affecting, we're really not even affecting site grades. So...
Did you act create an impervious area?
I am.
So what are you doing about the water?
I don't even, honestly, I don't even have to deal, it's such a small increase in impervious area. It's minimal to any sort of runoff that would be encountered. I could put in a crushed stone trench, like a drip edge along the pavement. I didn't propose anything. Like I said, he could come in tomorrow and do this without any permits, without any drainage requirements. I didn't hear at the first hearing any concerns with drainage. If we were going to stick with a four-unit, I was going to look for a few parking spaces to maybe be a different surface instead of pavement, like a pervious paver, maybe some porous pavement. But we reduce the number of units. And it's already over paved surface. It's just, it's a small increase. If the parking spaces are nine by 18, we're probably adding maybe 500 square feet of impervious cover on the entire site.
Well, it looks like, looks like you have one existing space there. And you --
Right?
Yeah. And then three, four, five, and six are effectively the new ones, right?
Yep. So nine times 18 times four is the increase in impervious surface. But it's...
So I know you don't go to site planning board for any kind of site plan review, but, you know, we sort of have to look at that a little bit too, I would think, in the context of rainwater and driveway water and snow removal too.
Well, I would think if the first hearing, we had concerns with drainage. I think it was more the number of units and the number of parking spaces.
First hearing was a busy hearing.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Sometimes we think about these things after the fact.
We're open to putting in, if it appeases the commission and the abutters, if we could do like a two-foot-wide by two-foot-deep crushed stone trench at the edge of pavement, it would take away some of the green space. But it would be at grade. It would allow water to run off the pavement into the crushed stone and recharge into the ground. We don't have a problem with that. I didn't hear any concerns with the drainage besides more the size of the project, the four units and the number of parking spaces. But as I said, if it's a concern, it's something we gladly add, or we could condition it to provide something.
You know, I don't know if it came up, you know, specifically. I think, you know, as we reflect on these projects and we look at the changes that come in and we come to the next hearing, I don't think it's unreasonable that different things do come up.
Right. I would suggest too, on most projects that you probably see for conversions from a two to a three or to a four family, it involves a footprint change. And probably those footprint changes are, and then they're adding parking as well. We're not making any footprint change. So it's really just pavement area, which, as I said, he could even do without a permit.
You're not changing, you're not proposing to change the footprint at all, from what I can see so far, right? It's just the number, so it's just, you want to go from two to three now, as opposed from two to four?
Correct. And we did do, we did do a neighborhood analysis. That was asked at the last hearing as well, to show the number of single, two-family, three-families, and four-families.
I have it in my package.
Okay. I have handouts.
Oh. But I was able to get this, but I wasn't able to get that because I usually study before.
Did you file it already?
Did you submit this plan right here?
No, this is just part of the presentation.
It was more of an exhibit for the --
When I ask for, if I'm asking for something specifically, and you're going to give me a change of plans, I prefer me, myself, like to have it in my packet. Because I do drive by the area and I do like to look at them. So when I'm sitting here tonight, I can't look at that and I can't go in that neighborhood. And I can't say, oh, that's a two-family, that's single, single, single. So for me to do my research and present what I need to, to the neighborhood and what I need to for this board, when I have something that's handed to me that's a crucial piece of evidence, that aggravates me. So, I mean, because I specifically asked for it. I know I asked for it, and the board did as well.
And we prepared it, and for some reason, it didn't get into the board. It would be presented tonight, and you wish to continue, so you have more time to look at it. I'm open to that.
Well, I'd have to use --
Very important, Ms. McIntyre. I mean, you know, that may be necessary. I don't know.
It is necessary for me to make my decision, so.
All right.
Is there a brief, like history, there's so many singles, so many twos, so many threes here, instead of us trying to have to figure all of this out?
Does it keep plan?
Yeah, I know.
It really just depends on, you know, how far we extend this, the numbers.
Yeah, but you can't tell me like right now, off the top of your head, factual, there's X amount of single families or there's X amount of two families, can you?
Again, sir, it would really depend on how far.
Answer my question, yes or no? You can't tell me right now.
I can count them up.
All right, you can.
Continue. The point of this was locating where the proposed development of 33 Third Street, which is existing two-family, the existing two families in the neighborhood. We obtained this information from the tax records. So that's where we got this information. So the ones in green are the two-family residential. There is a light pink, which is three families. There's one on Third Street. There's three in a row, one Stollington Street, another one on Maple Street. And I think that's it within the general area that we're colored in. Four to eight units, it was kind of, it was kind of undeterminate in the tax records. It didn't say how many there were. It was just kind of a four to eight. And there's one on, off of Middle Sexton and Herick Street. And I think then up on Second Street. And there's two, three of them on Second Street where there's existing four families. Multi-residential are the purple. And it's just listed that way, again, on the tax records, off of Dudley Street. Condos are in orange. And others are black, which is the church. And I think that's the funeral home.
So, it's interesting to you about this, though. So, you know, in terms of the, do you have an idea of where the 300-foot diameter is as it relates to the statutory abutter neighborhood?
Well, I don't without measuring it. But I would say that the Third Street one falls within that district. There's at least one. I'm not positive about the three on Stollington, if they would fall within that. And I'm positive the one up on Maple Street is without --
I'm going to go back to Stone. I think that's --
I would, I don't know. But it could be.
This is a helpful aid, I think, in terms of trying to get an idea of what the general neighborhood looks like.
Well, if you wait five minutes, Paul will give us a synopsis of what's happening, right, Paul?
I mean, I'm not --
Yeah, just a couple minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I know that's important to you.
Could, could -- Can I say something? Where this house is located, it appears that all the immediate abutters are either single or two-family homes. By your color chart. Correct?
Yep. There's two immediate abutters.
Right. I see a lot of yellow here.
Well, a condo, I'm not sure how many are in that one, but --
Well, let's assume the condos are single, right? I'm going to assume the condos are single. It's not a multi-family condo, right? It's a single condo. Maybe a two-family that's split into condos, like, so I'm going to classify it as a single. So I see this is all single and two-families all around it.
So help me understand that. You have a condo that has two apartments inside?
Well, it's a two-family, okay. And what they've done with the --
So apartment building has two apartments inside. Is that now a condo or a single family?
No, no, no.
If you have two houses in one and two houses in the other, it doesn't equal a single.
No. If you have a two-family duplex, okay, what people have done is, with the two-family duplex, they've taken each side and they've condoed it. So that particular side is a, quote, "a single-family home." It loses, it's not really a two-family. Each one has its own individual owner.
Yes.
Am I making sense there?
Well, I get what you're saying. It doesn't make sense, though.
It doesn't make sense?
It doesn't.
People buy and sell these houses all day long.
No, but just explain why you're capping it at two. Why couldn't a condominium unit, you've marked as orange on here, be six units or 10 units? Why does it have to be capped at two in your assumption?
Well, I'm assuming, because I grow by it. And I saw, in my opinion, it was a two-family home that somebody coiled it. Am I right, neighbors?
Yes.
Am I right or wrong?
Yes.
Just say right or wrong.
Wrong.
Thank you.
Before we go down the road, that was kind of going to my question, though, in the context of the 300 feet, you know, in terms of trying to tie in what the neighborhood is, you know, right there. So it's fair to say, we don't know how many units are in that condo currently. Alan thinks it's two, but we don't know. But we know it's some form of a multi-family. We believe it's at least two. But you didn't identify it as three.
No.
Okay. So you must have, okay. Can you, I'd like to know a little bit more about the architectural part where you're not changing the footprint, and how you changed the scheme from four units to three, and what that means in terms of the layout.
Okay.
And how, and how it plays into the proposed site plan, in terms of where you want to park, where you want to access, where you want to egress, you know. And then we can tally the rest of these up for Mr. Kucha.
I just want to know how six turned to nine.
I don't know whether it was six. I think there was a misstatement of, it said proposed count. This is the, this is the, this is the one that we had last time was seven, proposed count was, I mean, the existing count was nine, down to seven. That was, I believe, what we had talked about, is that we're bringing it down to seven. I don't remember six being talked about. That could have been, somebody may have said that, but it's not what I think we had here, I believe. So the point was, it would make sense that there'd be less bedrooms with a four-bedroom unit because we're going to be having an additional living space that would take, take the place of one of those. So there may have been a misstatement during that conversation. I'm not sure.
Let's just go with what you have of course today.
So, all right. So I thought you wanted to look at both. So I'll go back to the third, the three unit.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay. So the three unit, the existing conditions right now are such that there's actually already three separate existing entrances into the building that would be, quote, entrance. So off of Third Street, right in the middle, there's a main entrance into the, to the front of the building. And then there's two side entrances as well as with a porch into the building. Those will remain. And there's also an exit off the back of the units on the first floor to an existing porch. They'll all remain. That's the existing condition. The proposed layout, it'll be renovated inside. But generally, you can see from the shaded areas of what's being changed. It's fairly minimal from the standpoint of walls, et cetera, that will be added. The existing front stairwell will have some enclosure done on that. There'll be a bedroom over here that will be part of this first unit. So there's a little diagram down here that shows the first floor will be, consists of one, unit one on this side, and unit two on this side. On the second floor, you come up an interior stair to unit two, and there's two bedrooms up on the second floor, access from that, from that stairwell. The front area would be the living and kitchen area of the third unit. And the second level on the left would be units one's, two additional bedrooms. So the unit one and unit three would have three bedrooms. And then unit three, which will be on the second floor, and then up into the attic space, which is currently, there's an existing bedroom up there. There's an unfinished room over here. That would be a bedroom here and a bedroom over there. So that'll be a two-bedroom unit. So there'll be two, three bedrooms, and then one, two-bedroom. And that unit count summary is shown on, on this sheet. Existing nine bedrooms, we're actually adding a bedroom back into this count from the previous one. So we actually have an additional bedroom with a three unit than we did with the four unit. Number of bathrooms are still to remain the same. Kitchen, we're adding one kitchen. And we're going to add one laundry room and one living room. one laundry room and one living room.
Can you show me the way out of Unit Three?
Unit Three is on the second floor. The whole building will be sprinkler. Yep. The, there is no second way out. The code requires a single means of egress in the building. If there's, the path of travel is under, at least, 75 feet of travel in a sprinkler.
And you feel that's sufficient with the sprinkler system?
Yep.
Even though the building is built pre-existing non-conforming in the beginning, right? Did the building code being built? You don't have fire separations in the building?
We will be around the stairwell. The only fire separation that's going to be required is between the unit around the stairwell.
Okay. We'll go over that if you get your relief later.
Yeah, I mean, we can go over the details of it.
Okay, we don't have to do that tonight. Any questions about the way out so far?
No, sir.
So, can you just show me on your site plan where the entrance and egress is for your three units?
Site plan. So there's a single entrance here. There's an entrance here. The other entrance is here for the three individual units, would all have their own separate entrances. Those exist now, so. Then there's a rear exit off the back of the first floor units into a deck area.
So you're also parking on that Third Street side?
There's two over here that would relate to that side, and then the other units would be one, two. I'm sorry, there's two here that would relate to the front, and the two here to that side. So we have two units per each unit. Two spaces per each unit.
Now, the garage is a one-and-a-half story. Is there anything on this half-story?
I've never been in there, so. It's just open? Yeah.
Is anything going to be planned for that? Is it going to put storage up there or just packing?
Just storage.
Okay, any other questions there?
I think they already addressed the, in regards to the garage, it's in dire need of maintenance and repair, as the whole structure is, so.
Yeah, sorry.
So they need to do this, and they're going to need to do some fixing in that garage to make it have a hole to even park a car in there, I believe, because they have the top on the roof, that kind of stinks.
Right. So you want to keep the garage, is that the deal?
Yeah.
You don't want to do anything new to the garage?
You want to keep the garage. That's the intent.
Yeah, no, I was able to walk around from the street, and I saw the garage. Mr. Koch, something?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, you know, maybe what we'll do is, why don't we, if you guys, do you have anything, Jack, you have anything else you want to present?
No, thanks.
All right, so why don't we open it up to any public comment that would be relevant to what's being proposed, and then if you just state your name and address for the record, so we can just keep note of.
As we make the move, Mr. Chair, I probably should have said, the count, according to my unscientific and quick count, and if anybody in the audience has something different, I'm all ears and willing to be corrected. On this plan, there appear to be 58 single-family residential homes, those are the yellow ones. There appear to be 42 family residential, those are the green. There are five three-family, those are the pink. Five four-to-eight apartments, those are blue. Two multi-unit residential, those are purple. Nine two-unit condos, under the assumption from Alan, those are orange, and there are two other buildings, those are black. I can calculate percentages of the whole, if that's something that would indulge the board.
You know, I think it's interesting.
This is sort of an area, I don't know, you know, where the neighborhood sort of begins and ends, you know, in the.
Yeah, we had that conversation last time, too, the, you know, how far up Main Street does it go?
Sure, so I mean.
Historical district.
I mean, I.
Actually, they have a new plan that they submitted in town meeting.
Who's the day?
We do, as a town. We submitted, if you got your, in your packet, is a new conservation plan.
Brilliant.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm just looking at it in terms of the structure at issue, and then trying to make my determination, 300 feet out.
Could I ask Paul a question, please?
Anything.
Paul, what is the total count that you came up with, with all the drawing?
Happy to do a total, Alan. I can get your percentages as well. So I'll be back, everybody.
Nice.
You're not putting evidence in the record, are you?
No, no, sir.
You're just talking about what they gave us.
Whatever evidence I have, I'll speak right there into their microphone.
There you go. How are you, Trin Caffrey?
Members of the board, my name is Andrew Caffrey. I'm an attorney from Andover, and I'm here tonight, as I was last time, with Joanne Cavallaro and Helen Murad Kenyon, who are both the abutters to this property, or within the cone of silence, within the cone of 300 feet. While the neighbors appreciate the fact that it's going from four to three units, we still feel that it's a misuse of the special permit, particularly in this neighborhood. We haven't had the benefit of the diagram that they've provided to you and so forth, but I, or the chance to have studied it all, but I suggest to the board that if you look at it, I think you'll find that Maple Street is very different from, excuse me, the Third Street is very different from Maple Street and Second Street. I believe the Third Street is almost exclusively single-family, and in some cases, two-family homes that are owner-occupied. When you go around the corner to Maple Street, it changes fairly dramatically, and Second Street is a whole different ballgame. It's, there are many multi-families down there. And part of the problem the neighbors have is that this is going to represent creep into their neighborhood. The nature of the neighborhood will change dramatically. While Maple Ave and Second Street may be a little bit different, are different from Third, that is the problem, is that it's going to become creep, and you're going to have non-owner-occupied properties. The parking lot continues to be an issue. I understand the need to provide the parking, and that they could pave their lawn if they want, but you're going to end up with what really amounts to almost a commercial parking lot on a Third Street. And really, this is, what this comes down to is an investment opportunity for the developer at the expense of the neighbors. And we just suggest that, again, this is a misuse of the application of the special permit in this neighborhood, and it's the opening of a door that will just make Third Street very similar to Second Street, and there needs to be diversity, and Second Street and Maple Ave are providing other housing opportunities. And the neighbors, as you will hear, I've asked them not to repeat arguments, but to, you know, to speak briefly to the board, but I think you'll hear from them that they're very desirous of maintaining the nature of Third Street as it is now. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm Joanne Cavallaro, 12 Milton Street, abutter. Do you mind if I sit down?
No question.
Okay. So I oppose the conversion of 3335 Third Street from a two-family to a three-family. I respectfully request that the board denies the special permit applied for by Mr. Rosendres on behalf of listed owner of record Scott W. Nelson and J&amp;M Realty Trust. At the last meeting, Chairman asked Mr. Sullivan to do some homework, and you said, "Show how your project fits in the neighborhood." And I'm speaking to you tonight about how this project does not fit into the neighborhood. I've plotted the abutters properties on several maps, so that you can visualize the area and understand why the Third Street project does not fit. The maps are the current use of parcels map, the owner versus non-owner-occupied map, and a neighborhood map that establishes the consistency of use, showing Third Street as sort of a border street to the Stevens Memorial Library neighborhood. So, do you mind if I give you some visuals? Okay. So they're not as pretty, because I don't have those tools. I wish I did, because this was very frustrating. I see these maps here look really nice. So I had to go to Google Maps. I had to go to Google Maps and take a picture of the streets, and I hope you can read them. I'll take any additional ones back. So I'll also bring out some additional points to identify how the project doesn't fit, and these are density, streetscape, historic properties, and conditions and promises. So I've gone through and I've reviewed the use code for each of the parcels on the abutters list, using the assessor's database. I also took a trip down there, because I was having a problem with a few. So the current use, so this is in a butters list, the current use in this neighborhood of abutters, which is zoned R4, are single families, use code 101, condos 102, which are different than two families, 104, and a three-family, 105. Yes, absolutely.
So you're breaking this down by the assessor's tax code?
I am breaking these down. So what I did is, I took the abutters list.
Okay.
I took that sort of 300, I don't know what the rule is.
Yep.
Right, so it's the abutters list, somebody already did that. I have the list.
Okay.
And then what I did is, I looked at all the use codes, because I believe it was Ms. McIntyre that said you can't drive around and see and tell by that way, and actually that was very true, because I learned a couple of things along the way.
All right.
But yes, that's what I did. I looked up the use code.
That's helpful.
So, so there, so if you can take a, just peek at the first map, and you know, I know it's not perfect, the abutters current use map. There are 34 abutters and there are 38 parcels. They're made up, I'm actually going to give you a copy of this presentation, because I have a lot of data in it, and if it's helpful, I'll give it to you afterwards.
What do you mean, the president, is it electronic?
Paper.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, I have paper.
Excuse me one second. Do you think you should maybe get the engineer a copy of what you have?
I will afterwards, sure, if you'd like me to.
So he would know just what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
As far as the abutters list goes.
Sure.
Because I think it's very imperative.
Okay.
Great point. Do you have an extra?
I do. You actually, somebody has them. Okay, so I'll give those to you afterwards.
I mean, that's kind of eye-opening. That's why I say it.
That's a great point. Can they just read along with you?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, I just, so it's, I'm really not good at switching.
I didn't mean to.
I'm not good at transitions.
That's the task, was that what they said?
I'm just not good at transitions, right? Okay. So there are, we're looking at the current use map on page one. There are 34 abutters and there are 38 parcels. They are made up of 16 single families. Seven are on Third, eight are on the streets that intersect with Third, heading towards the library. There is one on Main. The majority of abutters are single families, I think most of us know that. Eleven are two families. Two are on Third, granted by special permit within the last decade. The remainder are on Main Street and behind the Third Street project, running down towards Waverly. There's one three-family. It's 11 to 13 Third Street, which is owned and maintained by the Conti family. The phone, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the house, but has this very small footprint on Third Street. There's no parking lots on either side. Interesting, I looked it up, it was built by George Smith in 1889 and 1890 as a duplex home, and it was the only multi-residential use home on the street until presumably the '70s. There are four condos on Maple and Stonington, which are streets located behind the proposed project. There are five land parcels. There's one business, Conti, which was established in North Andover as a funeral home in 1957, before the rezoning, probably. It wasn't Conti at the time. There are zero multi-families. The houses on Third Street were built with a purpose of single-family residence at the time, for senior managers and administrators of the mills, which is different than the more sort of multi-residential use that's behind the 3335 Street project. If you can, just turn to the second map, the abutters owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied map. Out of the 34 abutters and 38 parcels, 27 are owner-occupied, 16 singles, and 7 two-families. It might be off one way or the other there. Considering the Conti three-family has an onsite owner, you know, I just put it into the owner-occupied, because, you know, it sort of fits in to the discussion. Bringing the total to 28 properties that could be called owner-occupied.
Where does this data source?
Okay, so what I did is, I took the abutters list, and the abutters list has all of the addresses for each of the properties. The biggest clue is when the address is a property that is not an abutter property. So it was easy to follow, like, for instance, Mr. Conti. He doesn't live on the Conti property, but his address is somewhere else in North Andover. Give out the address. So I know that's a non-owner-occupied property. Okay? The tax bill goes to 12 Milton Street, North Andover, Mass. Joanne Cavallaro, owner of the property. The abutter list is Joanne Cavallaro, 12 Milton Street, North Andover, Mass. I know most of these properties and a lot of the owners, but I did go through that process for each one. Okay. Where was I? Next sheet. Out of 34 abutters and 38 parcels, okay, we did that, right? Four properties are non-owner-occupied, all are two families. Three are on Maple Ave, behind the proposed project, and one is on Main. So I know the zoning board and the neighbors, we have no real control over whether a property is owner-occupied or not. Historically, Third Street has been predominantly owner-occupied, but, you know, it gives you sort of the feel, our sense and our feel of how the neighborhood is. That's all that portrays. The third map is the neighborhood map. The last map shows a distinct difference in use, a line where the neighborhood starts, Third Street. Third Street and the streets that intersect and head towards the library are considered by North Andover residents to be the library neighborhood. So there are no maps that says this is the library neighborhood or this isn't. When I bought my house, the real estate, it was, the listing said that it was in the library area. I see that all the time. People say, "Where do you live?" I say, "The library area." I don't think there's a map, right? Didn't find one. So the zoning bylaws refer to the library area as being in single-family homes, which should be taken into consideration when making zoning decisions. So I'd like to read one consideration from page 34 of the bylaws for contacts, just within this presentation, and I'm sure the zoning board is very familiar, and I do want to say specifically, this has been abbreviated, but I'm just trying to make a point. The zoning board of appeals, oh, Jesus, 34. It's not a legal interpretation, okay? The zoning board of appeals.
I'll follow along with your intent.
Yep, 34. The zoning board of appeals may approve a special permit for proposed use of a building, dwelling, or structure upon finding that the application complies with the purposes of this bylaw, and is consistent with the use of the site for the purpose permitted within the residential four district. In making its decision, the zoning board shall consider the following criteria, I only want to talk about one right now, achieve compatibility with the established pattern of uses in the district, and I think that's sort of a key phrase. The residential four district consists primarily of single-family dwellings near the Stevens Memorial Library area, and off of Massachusetts Ave, which is at the bottom of that map, I highlighted it, in more compact neighborhoods with a mix of residential uses towards Waverly. So if you look at how Mass goes, like Mass Ave goes like this, and Waverly goes this way, right, and then you kind of look at everything in between, and you say, "Well, what's towards Waverly?" Well, you should start going past Third Street, because you can see that those are all predominantly single families. There are quite a few streets there on the left, all the way down Herrick Road, those are all single families, and it's a really mixed pattern right behind Second. But it does get to be more compact as you go from behind Third Street and you go down. So I didn't draw a line there, and I'm not disputing that some of those houses or streets are or not in the neighborhood. I'm just taking some facts that I learned and trying to put them on a piece of paper for you, okay. Third Street contains a majority of single families with several owner-occupied two families, and one family is an onsite owner. If this special permit is granted, a piece of the library neighborhood has changed, and it's subject to change even more, because there's already a three-family in the neighborhood. What's the established pattern of use will be the question for the next project. This is a major project, so this is the largest project in decades on this street. It's the most dramatic change in use in a long time on this street. The density of the street, you know, I know you hear these things all the time, Third Street is becoming increasingly dense. It's a short street, it's a very short distance. There's the Conti business, there's several two-families. There's a two-family, non-owner-occupied property sitting on Main that has its parking lot in an enormous curb cut on Third Street. There are five intersections, and then we have the 3335 Third Street proposal for a huge three-family with eight or nine bedrooms and a new parking lot. So the pedestrians need to watch themselves. There are more curb cuts on Third Street than there are curbs. Driving down Third Street, it's a challenge. You've got to keep your eyes open. There are cars and school buses entering from five streets. Cars are parked on both sides of the road on a regular basis, corner to corner during funeral events in St. Mike's Masses. Masses. Third Street too often is a significant challenge, and it can be impassable. I've tried to get down there when it's impassable, and I backed up. It becomes one way. Adding another apartment building brings more cars, more curb cuts, more people, all of which is going to worsen the density problem. Two streetscape, Third Street becomes a much more commercial feel with the approval of this project. Asphalt or concrete parking lots for four parking spaces or maybe more. I mean, I don't know anything about that barn, but I'm going to tell you that there hasn't been a drivable car in it for 15 years at least. So I don't know why nobody put their cars in there in the winter, but somebody should go in there and look around. I don't know if it's viable. A row of commercial landscaping doesn't help hide the feel. Third Street is already struggling with maintaining a residential look in its streetscape with the funeral home and the large parking lot servicing the Main Street two-family located on Third. The conversion changes the streetscape of our neighborhood. Historic property, 33-35 Third is a home that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The house was built in 1864. Kathy Siska covered some of this at the last meeting, as a single-family home by Asa Angier for his wife. It was built, so it was built as a single-family home, and I, and I, I want you to know that I used resource, I used this resource. Stephen Roper did the research, and I believe Gayton Osgood took pictures of all the historical homes, and he did the architectural pictures. Many of those homes in Third Street are in this book, and a lot of the abutters homes are in this book.
But you're not proposing any exterior change.
Correct. That's correct, absolutely.
So how does that affect the historical aspect?
The land changes. The land is historical, and it is in the bylaws. I mean, they talk about the land. I'm not saying it's a perfect application, but it's important. Right. So, so this is just a little background. The stately homes are quite large. Most have been, most of yards, as we've already mentioned, are made up of multiple lots. So we can have a lot of three and four families and maybe five families. I can't remember how high we can go. The street is nearly authentic as it is. Incredibly, these properties have been preserved for 100 years or more. Reading again from the bylaws, page 34, abbreviated, two more points. "In making its decision, the zoning board shall consider the following criteria. One, preserve existing structures of historic value. Buildings, dwellings, or structures listed on the National Register of Historic Places or the State Register and/or more than 50 years old, as of the data application, for a special permit may be converted, constructed, reconstructed, restored, or altered, only in a manner that maintains or promotes their statuses listed." We're talking about the outside. I understand that. Okay. "Two, preserve established mature vegetation." These two considerations written into the bylaws show that the town's priorities, that it's important to the town to preserve these historic properties. That's my point. Okay. "Conditions and promises. These were briefly discussed at the last meeting by the owner representative, the board and the abutters. Many promises and sometimes conditions are long forgotten when the property is sold. We were told at the last meeting that the purpose of this property is for rental income. J&amp;M purchased a two-family on Second Street. I don't know if it was a two-family. I think it was. It's now converted into a three-family, and in one year, it's on the market again. There's, I have a list of real estate transactions from the Northern Essex Registry of Deeds."
You know what, and I don't want to interrupt you.
Yep.
But I want to, we have another, we have, I want to give everybody a chance to talk.
Right.
And I just want to, I just want to, I want to take this back into...
Is everybody okay? I'm almost done.
We're okay.
Okay. I actually...
Keep going. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, two minutes to finish.
We're at, almost ready to wrap it up.
Okay.
Okay.
It's okay. You're doing great. I don't mean to be rude. I just have to, I have to just run the meeting. Go ahead.
"Many promises and sometimes conditions are long forgotten when the property is sold. We were told at the last meeting that the purpose of the property is for rental income. J&amp;M purchased a two-family on Second Street, converted it to a three-family in one year. It's on the market again. I have a list of real estate transactions. Buys and sells." So, I mean, they're running a business. I get that. That's a business. But now it's a business on Third Street. That's their first priority. It's a real possibility that, based on history, that the house will be sold once completed, along with promises and those conditions. And there they go. The trust found a niche in the market. I feel like they're exploiting it in North Andover. That's my opinion. If the owners of 33-35 Third Street are granted this permit, the trend of buying, converting, and selling in the neighborhoods that are not consistent with their use will continue at the expense of the town, the neighborhoods, and us abutters. To wrap it up, it doesn't fit. Not only does it not fit, the town loses, the abutters lose. Owner of record Scott W. Nelson, care of J&amp;M Realty Trust, benefit, and we feel like at our expense. At the last meeting, it was stated that the owner can put in a parking lot anytime. I guess we still feel that way. Should give us all a warning about the future of what it will be like dealing with this. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Fortunately, we have a board with substantial expertise. We have bylaws that give a generous amount of discretion to boards in making decisions on projects, giving boards stewardship. The zoning board is a steward, and the abutters are stewards, and the historical commission are stewards. North Andover's abutters are opposed to the proposed project, and the historical commission has spoken against it. Please take the first step in preserving this street that we feel is already changing its use by the last decade of special permitting. Based on your analysis and expertise and a review of our points, please vote to retain the current use and the harmony of our neighborhood and deny this permit for 33-35 Third Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
I just have one, just one question, very clear.
Yes.
Are you submitting that, what you read to us?
Yes, I will do that, yes.
Okay. Did the historical commission send us a vote?
A vote?
You said the historical commission is against it. Was there something that, or was it just from the...
She spoke against it. That's what I said. She spoke against it.
Okay, I misheard you.
She says, you know, it would be, oh, I feel like I didn't read that. "It would be a shame," she said. Did I read that?
Yeah. Okay. Maybe I just misheard it.
Okay.
So, you know, one of the things that comes up in these hearings, and, you know, when the applicant is seeking a special permit, you know, the boards, the board does have discretion to issue conditions, you know, and/or restrictions in terms that don't currently exist as it relates to what they may be able to do by right, you know, without moving forward as it relates to landscaping or site plan or different things like that. You know, those are the equities sometimes that get weighed in the context of the project.
I understand that.
So...
I understand that. But, I do. But there's always another side and another perspective, and there is a current use, and I tried to present you with factual data.
Absolutely. I think that was great. Thank you very much. What, which one is this?
This is just, I don't know, pictures that people have taken.
These are streets, like streets.
Some of them related to density, some of them related to parking areas that are two, three family parking areas.
This is a view, so we're looking at a view, looking down Third Street, and in one direction and back in the other. Okay.
Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Kim. Mrs. Cavallaro's presentation is honest, accurate, and comprehensive. It would be time-consuming and redundant to restate those points. However, there's one or two factors in the equation calling for further attention. We are all very apprehensive about the absentee landlord. According to the architect who spoke at last, who spoke last month, the owner wants to be a good neighbor, considerate of the neighborhood concerns. I'm sorry, I, I should have really said reference owners. If you reference the meeting last week, I said that on the North Andover Board of Assessors, public access to real property information, the owner's name is Nelson Scott with COJ&amp;M Realty Trust, and on the North Andover Tax Collectors Bill to its J&amp;M Realty Trust, Jose Emery Resendez. I've not seen Mr. Nelson or Mr. J&amp;M Realty engaged in any of the meetings. It's been years since a property's been sold, yet during this time, none of the owners ever approached any neighbor for personal introduction or informal discussion on improvements, upgrades, or renovations. In my book, this has been, in my book, this has been and is the normal conventional process that first-class Davis follow and standard business practices for first-rate businesses. What's particularly disappointing is the fact that in the past, two of these individuals have been our home guests and friends. They know the streets. They know the community in the streets. They know the protocols. What's more, they know the people on the street. The zoning board of appeals' legal notice in early August was the first time any of us received word about major renovations. Last month, they mentioned the issue of some deterioration of property since initial purchase. Old tables strewn over the property, noise, and traffic. Wouldn't you assume that the homeowner, who was here at the last meeting, would have endeavored at least to make good faith effort to correct some of the problems? This is one of the, this has been, this old table's been out there for six months. I took, I took that picture yesterday, by the way. It's been here for six months. You travel all on Third Street admiring the stately homes and well-kept yards. You trek down the length of Richardson and Milton Avenue's picturesque resonance. Then out of the blue, you stumble upon the rotting 34 Third.
All right.
Please get them to play that up. The traffic issue is already serious, especially when schools are released. More cars that impede sidewalks will add to the danger to children and pedestrians, especially when tenants don't currently adhere to safety protocols. I was coming out of Conti funeral home, for funeral. This is the front of the building. You can see where they're parking the cars. Now, they have parking spaces in there, and I believe why that was done was to make sure that his entrance egress was blocked. There was no mention this evening about the patched up, well, there was brief mention about the patched up garage being put into working order to park two cars. If anything other than a compact car is left in front of the garage, sidewalk safety and ease of use will be compounded. I believe you brought up the issue about parking there. This is a car that was just recently parked there, right outside that garage. You can see how it blocks the sidewalks. This is not, that's not a compact car. And the other mention here, too, is this is still the garage that's going to be housed in two cars. I agree with Mrs. Cavallaro. I don't know why or how anyone would ever put a car in there. I'm not an engineer, but I am a 13-year veteran of the school building committee, and I think I can make a pretty good judgment of what's not a fortified building. It would be safe as well as, you know, taking care of the parking that's required. Thank you. Please do not approve this special request.
Hi, my name is Renee Slack. I live at 25 Dudley Street, and I'm here to...
25 what?
Dudley Street, around the corner. I'm here a while ago, about eight years ago. We came before the board, and we got really good direction because what we did was we submitted a proposal to convert a barn into a carriage house. And so we listened and adhered to the special permits, patterns of use, most dramatic change of use, and we stayed within the guidelines. And your direction that you gave us was really helpful and beneficial. And one of the things that really struck me at the time, and I didn't argue it or anything, was the barn is, the carriage house is considered an in-law apartment. So one of the questions I was looking at, when I was looking at the reviews, was how is this numbering pattern or scheme going to be applied to this building itself? Because I know that our property, I wish I had the dimensions or anything, which is big enough, and I felt that we could have requested, maybe made A and B separate. But we wanted to stay within the historic value and preservation of the community. North Andover is a very nice town. The town, our house was built in 1895, and, and the exchange and dialogue that this board provided us gave us a lot of insight of, as to how the people of North Andover take pride in maintaining a historical environment, yet at the same time encourage growth. And you do growth in a manageable, nice way. So I would, am against this proposal to re-convert this house because I'm looking at what is in front of me. And the experience I went for 13 months to convert a simple barn into a carriage house is mind-blowing. It's mishmash. I don't see a front egress. I really don't see a second egress. I can talk all about the technicalities and everything, but from my perspective, it goes against the grain of the people of North Andover and how we want to maintain a nice single, a community of people. And I just, that's all I wanted to say. But I wanted to let you know, we, I love our house. Thank you very much.
Where did they go? I just want to make sure they get down. They're all getting down.
All right, sure. Can I have that, can I have that nice, that's a number check?
Joe Cavallaro, 12 Milton Street. Mr. Chairman, committee members, Mr. Brown. This neighborhood is now predominantly made up of stately, single-family homes with some two families and one three family. By approving this special permit, this board will be setting a precedent that the one- and two-family homes are prime for development. That will be the precedent you will be establishing by approving the special permit on Third Street. This special permit is not good for the abutters. This special permit is not good for the neighborhood. This special permit is not good for North Andover. Please set a precedent that this neighborhood is not prime for future multi-use conversions that is not consistent with the current use. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. (applause)
All right. Anybody else for now? Yes, please.
My name's Tim Vaughn. I live at 11 Green Street, but I own the property 24 Third Street, across the street from the property in question. We've owned that house for 19 years. We lived there for 15 years. We raised our family there. It is a two-family. When we, we bought it, I took pains to take the front of the house and make it look more like a single family. It is a single-family neighborhood. You need to look at this as Third Street towards the library, not towards Waverly Road. To Attorney Caffrey's point, I was worried about creep. I could have expanded my attic and made it a third family, a three-family at the time. I didn't want to do that. There's a lot of good, single-family people. It's a community. There's good roots there. I've had long-term tenants. I'm talking nine years, six years, five years. People have raised their children in that house besides us. I still go back to that house three or four times a month, and I talk with the people that abut me. You're not going to get that with this. Thank you.
(applause)
Okay. It's about quarter to nine. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard from the audience? All right. Any, any other remarks or anything you'd like to restate?
I want to talk on the owner occupied issue versus renting. We are looking to rent. I don't think that should weigh into the board's decision. We could have come in and said he's going to make three condos. Someone could, he, he could take this down the line and make it into three condos. People who presently have two families could sell their homes down the street, turn them into rentals. I don't think that, that really should weigh into the decision tonight. And I, I did want to state, there's two existing curb cuts on this property. There'll be two at the end of the day. There's no exterior changes to the house. The reason this special permit process went into existence is because people were taking single-family homes and slapping on another single-family home right on, and causing a blight to the neighborhoods. That was a density in bulk we should be talking about. That's why the bylaw came into effect. In this case, it's, it's a large two-family unit. It's all internal changes. The building's historic. We're not proposing any changes to that. The garage will be fixed. In the three units, as you can see from the handouts, they're about 1,400 square foot units. They're good-sized units. It's not like he's trying to create some, you know, tiny units, that they're good-sized units. And we did try to retain the landscape features as much as we can. And there were concerns, one comment about people overhanging Maple Ave. That's one reason. We didn't put additional parking off of Maple Ave. We would be overhanging. We're trying to formalize the parking situation. So I understand the abutters' concerns. I know the board has a tough decision to make tonight. We feel making the reduction to four to three units, we were trying to show good faith. We tried to lower the amount of parking. I know it's still unpopular, but we, we did try. We heard your concerns, and we did come back with, with a different, different option, and we'll leave it to the board to make a decision.
You know, how do you, do you want to offer any comments in relation to, even by your own map, you know, that generally, it seems like there's a large number of single and two families in that area. I mean, how do you, what do you, how do you respond to that?
Well, I mean, we show three doors down. There is a three family. There's a number of two families. There are singles across the street. There's commercial. It's an R4 district. That's what it is. It's not a single-family district. It's not even a two-family district. It's an R4 district. And I think what weighs into this, if we were looking to make an external change, then we could talk about bulk, changing the historic structure...
then we could talk about bulk, changing the historic structure, changing way. Really, we're adding some additional parking. It's not going to be a commercial parking lot. There'll be some pavement. People asked for landscaping. We showed some plantings, and we're trying to retain the existing plantings. But it's not a single, even though there are, I agree, there's a large number of single-family homes, it's not a single-family district. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
So do you, do you have nothing else you intend to submit at this time?
I, I think we're, we're through with our comments unless there's questions from the Abutters or the board.
Okay. Ms. McIntyre?
Did you, I'm sorry, someone had a question.
I have a question. How, okay, just the numbering, are you going to, how are you going to number them? If you go cooler or whatever, is it going to be like 33, 35, 33A, 35B?
Are those units? You mean the, to the extent the units were created?
Yeah. Are they going to be individual? Are they going to be like an in-law attachment or one meter, two meter?
Becomes a reality. That's how every building in town is addressed.
And public safety would weigh in as well.
I'd be remiss, and I feel really empty inside, Mr. Chair, if I didn't actually share the calculations on the record that I, that I labored over. The applicant's map has 58 single-family units, which we talked about, which is 47.93% of the area that, that the applicant has shown. And then the public testimony that we received has 16 single-family units within the, I think the, the Abutters' list of 300 feet. And that's a 48 roughly, I'm, I'm just going to round everybody for the sake of ease. The applicant shows 48% of the units as being single-family, and the public testimony shows the same number, 48% as single-family. So in spite of downsizing and making it more germane to the locus of the applicant, the percentage of single-family homes remains astonishingly the same. The two-families, the applicant shows 40 units, which is 33, 33%. And again, astonishingly, the, the public testimony shows 11 two-family units, which is also 33%. For three families, the applicant shows five for 4%, and the public testimony shows one, which is 3%. Four to eight units, multifams, four units are shown by the applicant for 3%, and there are none shown in the, the more narrow districts, so that's 0%. For the condos, there are nine shown by the applicant for 7%, and there are four shown by the public testimony, which is 12%. The other multifamily, what, the three fam, I believe is what it is, no, multifam, I'm not sure actually the distinction between the two, shown. Shown three by the applicant for 2%, and there are zero in the public domain, the, the public testimony for 0%. And finally, the other, which are the two, commercial or the church, is, is 1.65% for the applicant, and there's one in the public, public arc, which is 3%. Both of them add up to, with rounding, 99.99%, so we've captured all of them. So I guess the conclusion, and people certainly can quibble over the conclusion, but it appears to be that the distinction in both number and percentages are astonishingly similar between the public testimony and the applicant's larger map.
All right. Thank you. Thanks.
I do what I can, Mr. Chair. It's not much. And in the balcony, thank you.
Okay. So, makes sense to close the public hearing? We'll deliberate. Okay.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Okay. All right. I'll hear a motion to close the hearing.
I think it was the public hearing that wanted to...
Sir?
Motion is a second?
A second.
Motion is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So the public hearing is closed. Board deliberation, if any?
The only thing I would have to say is according to the applicant's numbers, there's 42 two-family homes. That if we were to allow this, I see 42 other people that would be in front of us right now applying for extra apartments. And I see that as a recipe of disaster for this neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
By, by extension, Mr. Chair, I can make the argument that I see 58 single-family homes in the applicant's map, and we could see 58 single-family homeowners coming to this board looking to make a three-family out of their house. And that's, that's not a dissimilar argument. So I'm not sure what it does.
And Paul, do you really think, do you really think these people want to see 58 single-family homes made into three-family homes?
No. And I, I also think that...
What do you think that would do to the density of that neighborhood?
Everybody in the room now knows that it's an R4 district, Alan. This is not a surprise.
Yeah, 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 but, okay, so let's round it off and say there's 60 single-family homes. They make them three families. Okay? So you put 180 families in this particular area.
Let's knock down the church and put up 400 units. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure. And if anybody takes me seriously, you know, we could, we could talk outside. It's an absurd argument to counter. An absurd, I'm countering an absurd argument with another absurd argument in order to illustrate a point.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. So when the board deliberates, the public hearing is closed, there's no more evidence that comes in, there's no more, you have to just let us do our deliberation and call out. Okay? It's just, you just have to let us do it. Okay? I, I know you were talking. Go ahead.
Oh, no, that's all. I was just countering, like I said, to, to the gallery. I was just countering one absurd argument with another. That's, that's all.
I didn't think my argument was absurd. Okay? That we're allowed with 42 other people to come in here and apply for a similar application as this young man is.
Okay.
Okay? And now we're taking 42 two-families making them three families, and that is my friend destroying a neighborhood. Let's talk reality, Paul. Let's not talk books. We're talking real world.
Why are you limiting, in order to prove your point, why not say that the single-family homeowners are going to come in and want to convert to three families? What's the, what's the difference, Alan?
Okay, where's the incentive? Why would a person want to go from a single to a three? Come on.
Because they want, because they want three rental units.
Wow.
What do you mean? What's the incentive, Alan? You're, you're a businessperson. You understand apartments. You understand the economics.
I make my living by it.
You make more money the more units you have.
First of all, you can't convert a single-family to a three-family quite as easily as you convert a two-family to a three-family.
Depends on the number of kitchens. Depends on the number of...
I'll be quiet.
Depends on the ingress, depends on the egress.
Thank you.
There are lots of hurdles to both conversions, Alan.
All right. So with respect to what's before us, okay, we have, it's an application for a special permit. The only question before the board really, as it relates to the bylaw, is if the proposed intent is in conformity with, with that neighborhood as it is articulated within page 34, I think, of the bylaw that was referenced earlier. And I really think that that's, we should just stick to the relevant facts and not hypotheticals about what could happen. I only want to talk about what is happening. So the public hearing is closed, the evidence is in. Typically, I think we should just move it, as we, as we do with most of our hearings. And it requires, it requires four votes, so we're a five-person comprised board. Okay? So it does require a supermajority, which would be four, in order to be approved. Okay?
Sure.
You know? So I'll hear whatever, I'll, I'll hear a motion. Ms. McIntyre, would you like to make a motion? So typically what we do, ladies and gentlemen, just so you have to understand...
You have to explain me.
I'm just going to take, just to explain to you how the board will move in the affirmative for a particular application, and then I'll call the votes. And, you know, it does require four, but just because it's moved in the affirmative doesn't mean anything, then that's how we move all of our petitions. Okay?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit for the R4 zoning district for relief existing two families to a three-family under the zoning, I can't see, I'm sorry, bylaws section of 4.122D, special permit granted criteria for two-family dwellings and one family to two-family or multifamily conversions. Do I have to read the rest? Under B, the right to apply for a special permit to convert existing dwellings to the extent to any dwelling to be converted for use of, as a dwelling of not more, I should have brought my glasses, not more than five residential units and meeting all requirements of the state and town statutes and bylaws. That's the bylaw. Including the health codes, building codes, zoning laws, and zoning bylaws with evidence presented. Do I need to cite all this?
I would reference it all because we typically do, the plans of record.
The reference that, all those pictures, I think you labeled them exhibits, Al. I'm not quite sure.
No, no, just, we'll submit it by the app.
Oh, okay. All right. This is the current one.
And then, that's already in evidence. We already have that. That's already here. So it's just what he proposed. He's moving to, to what he proposed. Okay, with his plan.
The plan proposed...
By Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan Engineering dated 6/5/15, revised 9/18/15 with architectural plans.
Right.
By GSD. A1.0, A1.1, A1.2, and that's it.
Okay. All right.
Oh, and he submitted this as well, and submitted GSD A1...
But that's not a plan that would get reported. That's just a plan...
It's evidence.
Just a plan that came in for evidence. That's okay. All right. So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, but we put it along.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll, I'll call over the other. Mr. Quatch, are you in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chair. No.
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 Okay. It, it fails. Okay. So a, a decision, we'll issue a decision within 14 days. Okay? No. What? Well, I'm, oh, I'm also voting no. Oh, I'm, I'm also voting no.
So that was yes, no, 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 no. Okay. So four no, one yes.
All right. We're going to, we're going to take...
You voted to close the public hearing, right? Who seconded it?
Ducted, yes.
All right, listen, we're going to take a five-minute recess in order to set up for the next hearing, okay? We stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.
We don't feel there's a conflict of interest.
Okay, and there isn't one. The purpose of the notice is to dispel an appearance-
Right.
-of a, so that's the, that's the purpose. And there is no conflict. So, having said that, just by way of history, just to bring the board up to speed again, you guys were in last month informally to talk about the hearing that you intended to have this month. You perfected the filing with respect to the notices that had gone out, I believe that went through town, you were working with town council on that, and Angela while she was there.
Right.
And there is a, with respect to what you're appealing, there was a denial letter that was sent from the building inspector's office to you or your client. It's the basis for-
Well, you could call it that. The appeal is basically, until recently, there was no response, formal response from the building department regarding inspection and enforcement of code violations on the subject pump station.
Okay, so just, I mean, I'm gonna let you read your presentation, and I just wanted to make sure you got the letter.
Yes, I got a couple of letters from the building inspector.
In response to your request-
Correct, right.
In response to your request for enforcement?
Correct.
Okay, which brings us to today, and the public hearing has been opened, and the floor is yours. Is the computer working the way you needed it to work?
Well, no, my computer's on its way out. It wasn't, I didn't expect it to be pressed into this type of service, and we'll do the best we can.
All right.
Really-
Sorry, before you proceed on your presentation, I just wanna also dispel any perceived conflict of interest that I may have. As a former owner of one of the units at Sutton Pond Condominiums, my mother currently owns one of the units there. I was on her deed as a co-owner as of six months ago, in which I was removed. I don't think it's, will inhibit my judgment, but if you would like me to recuse myself-
Uh, no, I think that's-
Given there's so many units, I don't think it's a big-
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue. I think it is, uh, no, we're fine.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Well, what's it about? Before you ask it-
About fixing a civil pump station.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna let him make his presentation about what the issue is, and then-
Well, and you'll see what I'm trying, what I wanna do, because it's late, and I'm sure everybody wants to get home, I wanna narrow what I think you may or may not be able to do. Because that, really getting into this is, what can the ZBA do in this situation? And what, we're not necessarily specifically asking that you order Sutton Pond necessarily to fix this pump station. I don't know if that's within your power. It'd be great if it was, but I don't, you know, you and I have talked about that. The greater issue that we're looking at is the enforcement of the code, and the requirement of permits, inspections, engineering, the whole shebang, in the current pump station. And-
Just to get the answer to your question briefly, and then we'll let him make his presentation. The, it stems from, the enforcement request stems from generally a, a special permit approval from the planning board when Sutton Pond Condominiums was developed, in which there was language in there relating to a sewer pump system. Now, broadly, that's what gets it here, in my view, under chapter forty A, when they ask the building inspector to do something which he may or may not be able to do, which he, for whatever, whatever the reasons he states, and then they have a right to an appeal to a public hearing. So, you know, it, we really have to try to wrap our heads around the facts, and I appreciate the fact that you're trying to narrow things, because I think, the more you can narrow it, the more helpful it is to all of us.
Right. And really, if it goes to that code enforcement power- Because, may I start my presentation?
I would, please, please. I just felt it was necessary to give some background-
That's fine.
You know, in terms-
This is basically, this chart right here is a pictorial example, or the actual original plans of how it used to be laid out before the condominiums were developed. There was a central pump station, that I've been informed, that basically served the industrial buildings and the building that basically my client has right now.
So that's an approved site plan from when?
Uh, this is actually from February, February of ninety-three, but we have older ones that show, at least dating back to nineteen eighty-six, okay? So clearly, that's what was originally there. According to the special permit, in order to develop Sutton Pond, the condominium project, the developer was supposed to raise that pump station, give the condo unit its own pump station, and then build a separate pump station under the special permit for my client's building. Obviously, and I would say clearly, it wasn't followed when this particular pump station was built. Sometime between nineteen ninety-three, before my client purchased it, and the time he purchased it, this was built. There's no permit on record to show that this was built. It just was built. The, other than the special permit, the next permits don't come on to record until the, I would say, the early to mid-two thousands, when the condominium pulled a permit to build a shed. And I find it odd that there was a permit to build a shed that houses the pump station, but there was never a permit for the actual pump system itself. And according to the DEP regulations, there has to be some sort of permitting process, engineering, design, because you're talking about a pressurized sewage system. And since the town does not have any specific regulations for this type of-
Did you say pressurized, just so I can wrap my head? This is a force main system, some kind of force main system that pumps into the main gravity flow?
Yes. Basically, it is, I mean, the closest that we, that the town has is septic systems, and I'm not aware of any regulations with respect to a pump station, but basically, it pulls raw sewage into a holding tank, and then pumps it to where it's supposed to go. With this particular pump station, it goes from, basically, there's the building right behind you. It goes up the hill and-
I can see it, yeah.
And up Main Street. Oh, you're better than me.
We have a TV thing.
Oh, I didn't know that. Cool, thanks.
It is cool. It's very cool.
All the way up, about six hundred and forty feet up to the Main Street main.
All right.
And really, according to the special permit, it was not designed to do that. So that's basically where we start.
Well, can I just ask you some threshold questions? So-
Sure.
I took a look at the special permit, I think, that was submitted. I don't recall them, I don't recall them having any particular specs in there, although maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong. It just talked about installing a force main pump system, or a separate pump, a septic's pump system, right? Was there something-
It did, it gave a location-
Yeah.
Where it was supposed to flow, and it gave the type of pumps that were supposed to be used.
Okay. Now, you know, in my limited experience here in town over the years, I find that the septic pumps, the sewer pumps tend to stem from the DPW department, and, you know, they seem to be the ones that issue those permits and/or approve those engineering records. Have you had any dealings directly with the DPW?
I have had conversations with the DPW. Their comment was, no permits required.
And-
Have you asked the pumping inspector?
I tried. He would not speak to me.
The pumping inspector, you were both?
He basically referred me to the DPW, and I spoke to the DPW.
But there were a lot of records, in my recollection, years ago, when I served on a different board, I, I think Town Hall used to be, Community Development Offices was actually located in this building at one time, and, you know, and I don't remember if it was this building or a different building, but there were a lot of town records that I think that were ruined in a flood, just from general memory, you know, I don't have any specific knowledge, but it's maybe why you can't find any of those-
That from the nineties?
I don't remember exactly when it was, but-
I mean, I've experienced that, but normally you're talking about pre-World War II records.
No, it was a different, it was a different flood.
Okay.
Not in this building.
Okay, but basically, the time period that we're talking about, though, is the early nineties going forward. And really, to focus on this more, part of it is the special permit that wasn't complied with. Part of it is, as, there will be members and representatives from Sutton Pond, as well as the building inspector, who basically says this matter has been litigated, there have been judgments, arbitration awards, et cetera.
Well, I think I saw that, and that's kinda relevant, too, in the context of, and I just wanna ask, I don't want to interrupt him, I apologize. I just, I have so many questions. If the matter had gone to arbitration, and there was an arbitration award, and it's, I'm trying to figure out what authority the board has to interfere with an arbitration award that's already, that's already gone through. I'm unclear on that.
Well, the arbitration award laid down how the pump station was supposed to be constructed in general terms, but it did not negate the requirement of any pump system being engineered, designed, and permitted. And really, the underlying thing is not necessarily negating all that has happened in civil court and with the arbitrator in the past. As much as it is, when anything is done under any type of settlement or award with respect to construction, it has to be done in a workmanlike manner. It also has to be, it also has to comply with a code. And I don't think you'll find any judge, any arbitrator, who's gonna say, well, there doesn't need to be a permit, or it doesn't need to comply with general engineering standards.
How do you get them to rip out an existing system and put in a new one?
I'm not, well, oh, uh-
That's what I'm unclear on. Like, was there an application for a permit that, after that arbitration award?
There was never an application for a permit. The only permit that was drawn immediately, I think it was right after the settlement agreement, was to construct a shed over the existing pump state system, okay? And that's when it went to arbitration, and then the arbiter made specific rulings in the award as to how the pump system was to be constructed. And-
A new system, not the existing system?
Well, a, a new system, and Sutton Pond and, and us sort of disagree as to what their beliefs and our beliefs the system should be, but ultimately, that's where we turn to the experts, if you will, the code enforcers, the DEP, who basically, the town and the DEP have told me in the past six months that this system was never in compliance, okay?
So, why don't you go back to arbitration for this? If they're not complying with the arbitrator's, why are you here? Why aren't you not in the courts getting what was required of the courts?
We can go back, but ultimately, whatever is, whatever this results in, it still has to go through the town of North Andover to exercise its police powers and doing the permitting process, making sure the engineering's done, it's designed, and it's properly constructed.
I don't agree with that, because you're at a state level, you're in arbitration.
The arbitration has been over ten years.
But you said that, then no one's complying with the arbitration, so why wouldn't you have, go back and say they're not complying, let them comply? So why is it in-
We could, and I'm not saying we couldn't. However, we've had, and I guess, from my standpoint, what we have repeatedly seen from the town is basically a refusal to say, even though the town has said to Director Kefory that this system is out of compliance, it never was in compliance, and the DEP is also-
But it was, but it was existing.
This, the system that we have right now, post arbitration.
Post arbitration, this was newly installed after arbitration?
Whatever was installed-
Picture what's in it.
Uh, this was installed after arbitration.
In what year was this installed?
Uh, two thou, actually, no, this was two thousand and two. I'm sorry. Uh-
That's, that's after your arbitration award?
Required by arbitration.
This is two thousand, well, this is after it blew. This is two thousand and fifteen.
What I'm trying to just get a handle on, time-wise, is after you received your arbitration award-
Yes.
Was a new, was a new system installed?
Eventually, according to the representative of Sutton Pond, they're gonna argue that a new system was installed. They installed new pumps in two thousand and twelve. They installed-
Sutton Pond?
Yes, they installed-
Is it their pump?
They had them, yes.
It was, it was their pump at that time?
Yes.
They, they had it in a storage facility-
Who owns the pump? They?
Technically, they own it. I mean, if you look at the footprint of the building, my client's land is right where the snow starts. That's basically where it ends. So part of the pump station is on my client's land, is attached to his building, the rest of it is on Sutton Pond land. Sutton Pond provided all the equipment and materials to build this. So, yes, it's theirs.
So did they not pull a permit to install that after arbitration? Is that part of the issue?
They never pulled a permit for the pump system. They pulled electrical permits, but they never pulled a permit for the pump system itself.
Because it's not required?
Uh, according to the DEP, they, the DEP wasn't specific. I got more specific input from the town. We had discussed different areas where it was out of compliance. Part of it could be the wet well size, part of it was the proximity to the building.
How is it always under the impression-
How come a plumbing permit was never required? You're putting it to a sewer system, right?
I, I would say it is required. It was never pulled. This is why, again, we've gone to the town and said, inspect, tell us what's needed.
So, where does the zoning board fit in on all of this?
I'm sorry?
Where does the zoning board fit, fit in?
Well, that's a good question, and that's basically where we went to you, to see if we could get some enforcement with the building department, to say, hey, this needs to be inspected and enforced, whatever needs to be required.
See, I don't think we're, while some zoning boards are allowed by statute to act as code enforcement boards, I don't think our board is comprised that way. I don't think we have that authority through town meeting to be a code enforcement board.
And code enforcers?
You know, I, you know, I, you know, I'm, you may need to provide us with some authority that says that that's something, that threshold that we could do.
I think your own rules and regulations state that you're, required, one of your mandates is to protect the health, safety, welfare, protect waterlin, wetlands, waterland areas, which we haven't gotten to yet.
Forty A, but just, again, these are just threshold issues, because, you know, I'm always, I always wanna help whenever I can.
Right.
And forty A is a zoning enforcement component, so you, you ask for the building inspector to enforce something-
Right.
He does or he does not.
Right.
That you're standing to come for relief.
Right.
I can buy into it, even in the context of, of, of the, of the site plan approval process through the planning board, that there may be some kind of code enforcement component to that, okay? But health, safety, and welfare, I think, is the board of health. You know, in the context of a sewer pump, or in my experience in the town, just to offer it, has been, as it relates to force main systems and force main tie-ins, has been through the DPW engineering department.
Right.
So I'm, I just, I just, I'm unsettled as, I'm unsettled as to our authority on code, on code enforcement. I mean, we could always ask, letters be sent, or something like that, but I'm unclear on our authority to do anything, because I would think your remedy would be litigation back for an arbitration agreement that wasn't being followed.
Right, and, and as I said, basically, when we started this particular process six months ago, our goal was to avoid litigation by involving the town.
Yeah.
I have to admit, we were quite pleased, at least in the beginning, of the town's involvement.
Okay.
Director Kefory did a lot of work. He tried to bring the parties together, but more importantly, he saw that a system that was not functioning, which is a town issue, okay, because it is health, safety, and welfare.
It's a board of health issue.
It is.
If you have a sewer issue, board of health will come in and shut you down.
We brought the issue to the board of health, and we even showed them videos when the board of health basically said it was fine. And, you know-
Did you, you appeared at the board of health?
Yeah, we did.
You did?
We brought documents.
Not the board, not the board, to the director.
Yeah.
To the director, did you-
Yeah, the director has actually personally been out there a couple of times.
Did you appeal the director to the board of health?
Did we what?
The board of health.
Did you appeal to the board of health?
No, we did not.
Okay. I'm just trying to, factually, I know we're firing questions at you.
That's fine.
We're not trying to be in appeals court, we're just, just, just-
That's fine.
I'm trying to really understand how, you know, what authority we have, if any.
But why don't you go to the housing court, the northeast housing court, and have them-
Not housing court, civil court.
Not a civil court, the housing court.
The house.
The housing court handles problems with board of health, or can condemn snakes, okay? Okay, they have arbitrators and, and, what the hell's the word I'm thinking of? Mediators. Okay, they work with everybody to, okay, to settle these issues.
But they have a very-
And the housing court itself would be the enforcement authority. I mean, that's what the housing court is there for.
Sure. Well, you know, I, I don't know. Who owns the pump now? The personal property, the pump itself?
Sutton Pond-
Their, their property, their pump.
Yes, I mean, to, to state a point, because of the land boundaries, and really the slippery slopes as to what rights each party has with respect to the pump system itself, I mean, I would say Sutton Pond owns it, okay? They may say, we own it now, but it's on their land.
Why would they say that?
A couple of years ago, we tried to at least try, get this moving, get an engineer to pull at least a permit for a plan or design or something, and they refused to cooperate. This is about four or five years ago.
All right. Go ahead, I, you know, I know we're interrupting you a lot, but go ahead.
I would say a lot of where, and, have you guys read the packet that we submitted? It was a pretty thick-
Every page.
Every page? Okay. The StanTech letter, the letter dated June twenty-six, two thousand and seven, is a good synopsis. Now, one of the things that I will say, and I will say it till I'm blue in the face, all we're looking for is what the code requires. I, I'm not an expert on the code, but I'll probably become one. We do not want the Taj Mahal despite represents, representations of the contrary. But really, there are many health and safety issues that if the board does deem some authority, there's a lot of issues that have continued since I got involved in two thousand and seven that haven't been properly addressed. You're talking about the issuance of permits without issuing a pump system permit, certain electrical permits that were issued, not realizing that this is a pump station with dangerous sewer gases.
Do you have copies of the permits?
Huh?
Do you have the copies of the permits?
Yes, they were in the packet, and I have copies of the permits with me. And one of the things that my client pointed out to me, the electrical permits were actually on his property, and he was never notified about these permits. They were issued without his consent.
He, it's his position that somebody working for the condo association went and pulled an electrical permit to do work on-
Correct.
His property?
Yes.
Does, does the power come from your property?
Yes.
All, all we've ever asked for is the permits, and it's designed from a professional engineer to design the pump system that was supposed to be designed. There's never been a permit pulled, or an engineering plan ever prepared and submitted for a permit.
Is there, do you have an, is there an easement from your property? Do you-
There's no easement. The most that we have is a license.
You granted him a license to, to use the electricity?
Uh, it was pre-existing.
It was pre-existing.
So you can argue an easement by prescription, but there's nothing, there's nothing recorded.
Let's just take it from your arbitration award, because you guys, you arbitrated. So what was the, what's the finding with respect to that?
The electrical system, or-
Sure, in general.
The main things was, the arbitr, and I'm going from memory, the arbitrator required a, the duplex pump system with the controls.
All right.
And he said that-
The town requirements.
It has to meet the town requirements, it has to comply with the state building and plumbing code.
And approved by us. And approved by us.
Okay, my client says it's approved by, well, the original settlement agreement also says that the parties have to work together. So there is a level of approval that he has to make.
So that's the arbitrator's award as it relates to the condo's pump?
Right.
They have to do that.
The pump system, yes. That was their requirement.
Okay. All right. Is it pumping?
It's pumping right now, but, I mean, due to technical issues, I'm trying to get a picture of-
We have a video. We have a video that shows it in multiple stages of failure.
If you look on the far left of your screen, you'll see a very faint white disc. Right now, there is raw sewage spurting out in a stream whenever the system engages. This is just a photograph.
You're talking about-
I do have a video of it.
Looks like some kind of, some kind of circular coupling-
Right.
On the, on the blue tube there?
Right there.
Sorry, it's up here on the screen. It's a flange over here. This is their seal, just the rags.
And basically, what we were told back in March, April, when the town got involved, that this was supposed to be a temporary fix. Now, representatives from Sutton Pond will probably say this is supposed to be permanent. We disagree. We don't know how long it's been leaking from that point. There are issues with the ventilation, that white pipe is actually the ventilation pipe, it just goes straight up through the roof and opens up to the second floor window.
So it's venting?
It is venting.
To my window?
Yes, and the occupant of the second floor's window, yes.
Can we show the video?
I can show you the video of actually what's happening, right?
It's your time. If you, if you'd like to show the video, um-
How long is the video?
It's like a thirty seconds.
That's a good question, Alan, thank you.
It is a good question. Okay, so that would be-
So, so it's the building, I mean, just to kinda cut to the chase a little bit, in terms of what has you here, it's the, it's the building inspector's position, town's position, that there's an arbitration award, and your remedies are not through the building department or the town, it's back through some form of arbitration?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so-
Is, is this supposed to service the whole complex, those?
No, well, his, his building, it's a three-story building, though. Three-story office building with two bathrooms on each floor.
Oh, this, this services your building?
Mm-hmm, right. Sutton Pond has their own mega pump station. They have something similar that is engineered and designed, and it pumps to a different location.
So did they convey any kind of title to you in the context of this land area, or?
No.
They just-
We, we pre-existed the condo.
So perhaps, perhaps what the chair is asking is, why is Sutton Pond responsible for a pumping station that services your client's building?
So, this is the, the plan that was submitted, part of that is all signed off. This is in the registry of deeds, which when I closed on this property, which is lease building A, I have a ground lease on this property that was pre-existed, the development of the condo. At that time, this is nineteen, this is an as-built condition, September first, nineteen ninety-three. Existing pump station existed in this location, which was in the middle of, there's like a tennis court or something back there. That's where it existed. This complex had a sewer that went across the river into the pump station, then went up into a hundred-year-old line that then went up into Main Street. It was installed, installed in nineteen oh one, a steel, a steel line. That, it's called out on here, it says, what, what structure to be raised, the pump station is to be raised. Part of the requirement, the special permit, was that that pump station was supposed to be raised and rebuilt by the condominium developer.
Right, so that's what you're talking about here, that's what, the system- Right, so that's what you're talking about here, that's what, the pump station that you highlighted will be demolished?
Right, that's the special permit.
Okay, would it install individual grinder ejector pump to the lift station at the courtyard location?
Yes, that's, that's in this location, which shows on this other plan, again, that was filed with the registry deeds as part of the development. Again, this silver pump house is located there. And the new, which shows it on this plan, is that's the, where the lift station is for the entire complex, went from, they disconnected it going across into this pump station and then put all the sewage into that. And part of the special permit was that this building, that the developer was supposed to install a new grinder pump and go and tie into that, right, with a new line. So the, the flow out of this is, um, you know, fairly, fairly small compared to, you know, a hundred and eighty-eight units over here. So, the old line that was, that served that was a four-inch force line, which is huge for that little building that I have. Sometime between, that's what he said, sometime between nineteen ninety-three and when I bought the building, that was raised and then without a permit or without any design, it was built over here. And it didn't go that way. Then they tied it into this hundred-year-old line, which went up here.
Well, can I just, can I just ask you one question, because I don't mean to interrupt you, but when you say without a permit, we don't know whether a permit was issued or not, we just don't have evidence of it.
There's no evidence in the file concerning my client's building that any permit was issued, either in that, either in his building or with respect to the Sutton Pond project.
In which file are we talking about?
Both files with respect to both properties.
Files, i- in which department?
Well, any, any file, I went to and looked at all the files, but, but the reality is it would have been something that would have been filed in the registry of deeds, because it would have had to require a revision to the site plan special permit, because it was a change, this was a change, a significant change from going across here to tying it into a hundred-year-old line. And it would have been a site plan modification.
To the, to the decision, you're talking about, it would have been?
Right. And it would have been then filed with it. It wasn't. There's nothing in, in the registry deeds, nothing in the town, nothing in the, the town information that does exist that that was ever done. And that's been part of our whole point, is that it never was installed right, it was, originally, it was never permitted, somebody, if you look at the thing, somebody slapped it together, I would, I would love to show you the video, which we have. Well, we're trying to load it, but. This sewer pump fails, I mean, with sewage, like completely filling up the floor of that whole thing, it is literally three feet away from my building. The building, you saw originally, it's a stone building, it has stone foundations, so when that thing floods, all that sewage goes right into the building.
But this is?
Just general, general permitting for a septic system says that a holding tank or a septic tank has to be a minimum of ten feet from any building foundation.
I hear you, so I mean, but if, if it's servicing just your building and, and the sewage is, you know, flowing, then?
It's flowing on the ground right now.
So?
Correct.
Isn't it incumbent on you to fix it?
It's flowing right on the ground right now?
It is right now.
So how come the Department of Public Health doesn't stop that?
I, you know, I.
And if you go to the?
I don't want to comment personally, but.
That's okay.
They basically have said, made overtures, but nothing has been done either way.
But isn't, but isn't their remedy going to be against you? If you go to the Board of Public Health and you say, the sewer that's coming from my building isn't working, and then, you know, what is their enforcement remedy in terms of how to fix it?
See, and this is a unique situation, and maybe our only remedy is at court to define who should do what, and we're willing to go there. What we were, what we were expecting was an enforcement order, and we were willing to accept an enforcement order against us, because then it turns everything into money, which is fine. It gives us the power to fix it the way maybe it should be fixed. But either way, the problem with the situation, if we were to even try and pull a permit to redo the whole system, we have to get Sutton Pond's consent, which in the past they refused.
Well, that's actually happened.
Yeah.
We designed, we started the design process and, you know, we have to file with the wetlands, we have to go to conservation, we've got to go to the planning board, which means we have to get the survey done, get all the engineering done. I mean, this is a very neat building, I mean, it's located next to a wetland, floodplain exists in that area?
Why do you have to go to the planning board to fix them up?
It's not fixing a pump, you gotta redo. The whole system is out of compliance.
Doesn't work.
I mean, I've talked with the D E P engineers, they agree it's not in compliance. They didn't go into specifics, but they basically said it's out of compliance, it never was in compliance.
If you look at the, the StanTech letter, outlines probably thirty different items that aren't in compliance.
I, I think to be crass and simplest, if something is spewing raw sewage, it's out of compliance.
Exactly.
That seems simple. So what I'm, and what I'm hearing from the applicant is, I don't care who you enforce against, enforce against the applicant, fine, then I'll go fix it. But as it is right now, if this pump and this, I don't even know what to call it, if this pumping station is on someone else's land, the applicant doesn't have the right to go on someone else's land to fix a pump.
This has been in failure currently at many, many different times, this has been since January fifteenth. We went in and I filed a complaint with the town, with the plumbing department, the booming department, the Board of Health, and the electrical department, all of them, I've had not had a single response until, and then March seventeenth, this whole thing was frozen, the line was frozen solid for that amount of time, and they were pumping it, the condominium was pumping it. And then the, it got warmer finally, because you remember, we had a long stretch of cold weather, that whole pipe was frozen solid, that thing let go, and that pump, they get a four-inch pipe that goes six hundred and eighty-three feet roughly up to the forced main hole, forced man, um, I'm sorry, to the sewer manhole up on, uh, second and main. That, when that plug left, this whole, I don't know if you have one of the pictures, but this didn't exist, this was all cut, all these backflows were there, this was all cut up, and that entire six hundred gallons of sewage flowed back into that building and then into our building.
I just, I believe everything you're saying, I just think that if, to the extent you get to the board level at conservation and or Board of Health, they find it hard to believe they wouldn't issue an enforcement order.
It's also a building department issue, and it's a plumbing issue, and it's all
I, I need to short circuit with a comment. If you show me even the shred of authority for this board to issue anything that's even remotely looks like what you need, I, I'm in favor.
Although, I think the mandate, a mandate that, that an engineering plan get prepared and built to code, I just don't know.
I, I appreciate that, what I'm looking for is, I, what we're not sure, certain of, is that where the guy is to be doing that. I would love to be the guy who can give you what you need. I'm, I'm not convinced that I have the authority to give you what you need, and if I give you the, if I give you authority that I don't have, then I get in trouble and I'm not ready to do that.
The problem is, the Board of Health has already told us no, building inspectors told us no.
I appreciate that, so what I'm asking you and your attorney, show me a scintilla of authority on the part of this board to give you what you need, and I'm on board.
I would say go to your rules and regulations.
Well, no, I, I don't, I don't, if, if that's basically what you're asking for.
That's what I'm asking for.
All this, the board, then I'm willing to put in the legwork to see, to basically prove that you do have the authority to do it. Because I think this is not just a Board of Health issue, I think this is a building issue.
You know, I mean, I, I understand what Paul's saying, and you know, and I've often, you know, we talked about whether we had the authority or not, and I, and I think, even if we had the authority under the special permit, um, but I think in terms of, you know, the enforcement, in, in your jurisdictional issues, where you're so close to the pond and you have sewage with respect to Board of Health, if you get to the boards, you know, if whatever the appeal process is to get to the boards, I would think that they would be the boards, and, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing with Paul, I mean, I would want to see where I have the authority, because I don't know, but I would think that the Board of Health and Conservation would be more helpful in terms of enforcement orders.
And to be clear, I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying.
Yeah.
But what I am saying is that if all of those options have failed so far, I don't want to be another failure if I have the authority to help.
Right, and I.
So, and I agree with you, exhaust the Board of Health remedy, if they haven't actually appealed to the Board of Health, if they haven't gone that far, then I would suggest the same thing. Perhaps do it simultaneously, put everything on a parallel pack, just carpet bomb the town of North Andover with paper, and I got to imagine that one of us is going to be able to come through.
I mean, I would think that that's probably a good idea, you know, really. Because even if we have, because there's, there's still this whole arbitration award that I'm trying to wrap my brain around.
The arbitration award doesn't necessarily absolve the town of its basic enforcement powers. The arbitration award says, install that pump and make sure it's licensed. It's still our responsibility to make sure it's licensed, to make sure it's inspected.
Right.
Unless, unless some higher power, if this F J, if the S J C says, the town of North Andover, don't you dare inspect that system, then hey baby, I'm backed off. But until that point comes, we ha, still have our basic enforcement authorities in spite of an arbitrator's award, especially when we've got raw sewage spewing out onto, onto land.
Oh, without a doubt.
Can I, say, according to the letter from the, from Mr. Brown here, right? Let me read, "The issue of the pumping station, which is the subject matter of your enforcement request, has been litigated." Is that true?
It has.
It has been, resulting in a settlement agreement. Has there been a settlement agreement?
That was in two thousand and four.
Okay, and that's a Superior Court order in an award of an arbit, so this is really an, al, already been settled?
No.
No.
So why are we here?
It hasn't been installed, and nobody's pulled a permit for it.
Because, okay.
You need to go back to the arbitrator.
So why don't you go back to the arbitrator?
Well, just let me answer the first question.
Okay.
And, as I said, we can, but this is also a town issue, and the frustrating part of this is, even for the past three years, to get the town to even respond to us, in two thousand and two, uh, when the last time there was a, a major failure, the, both of the pumps failed, we came up with a, a quick settlement in Superior Court, and then we basically agreed that Sutton Pond would install the pumps that they've had in their, in their, wherever they had it, and the control system. Our position that it was temporary, they said it was permanent, we agreed to disagree. After it was installed, I had a conversation with Mr. Brown, I said, did you know that this thing was never inspected? There are no permits. You want to take a look at it? He said yes, he was going to come over. Then he refused to, he let, he either talked to my client.
I apologize, sir, a big one record, I was there several times with your client, is that true, sir?
No, that was recently.
Is that true?
That was recently, this was back in two thousand and twelve.
We've been there one time.
Stop, I'm not going to argue with you.
He basically refused to return my calls, and then, when it froze again in January of two thousand and fifteen, there was no response from the town.
But I know Mr. Brown, you know, has been, has worked on this, so, um, you know, I'm, I'm trying to move this forward, that, that's, that's why you're here, and I, I know Mr. Brown believes that his authority is limited, and, and, and that's the position, and that's why you have a hearing, so, but I also, but I mean, I.
Mr. Manzi, one, one point you need to understand, and you need to understand, if there's sewage coming out of there, and I get ordered from the health department, I'm shutting down that building, I haven't had one since he's made all these complaints, not one from the health department, push the health department, make the complaint, and I'll get you out of the building. That's simple, but I'm telling you, go back to the arbitrator, that's it. It has everything to do with it. Why don't you just go to the Board of Health and have them condemn it?
So.
Okay, can I show the video?
Why don't you, why don't you show the video, and then in terms of the hearing? Show the, show the video, and then, you know, you might want to consider putting some kind of a brief together for us.
I agree with them.
In terms of what authority, if any, I mean, I think you should explore all your remedies.
That's what I'm trying to.
But, you know, I think that, I, I respect, I mean, honestly, I respect the building inspector's position as it relates to the arbitration award, I mean, I, I get it, you know, um, and I just have to really understand our role in this, you know?
And, and I actually respect your position, and I will brief it, and, and I'll be honest with the building inspector, I, I appreciate his position right now and how he stated in the letter, okay? Had he said it three years ago, I would appreciate it more, but at least now we have a specific position that has been articulated.
Attorney, for the record, the day he came in and made a complaint to me, the first time I ever heard about these complaints from him, I told him this is a private matter, go back to the arbitrator and straighten it out, this is a private matter between the condo association and himself, he was just buying the building, I don't think he even had bought the building, and now he had bought the building, that was, whatever it was, but it was between the condo association and him buying the building.
Is several inches of sewage on the, on the floor of this building a private matter, or is, sir, you're suggesting there's no code enforcement?
What does this have to do with the zoning board? What does that have to do with the zoning board? What does that have to do with the zoning board? They were getting it pumped, you're not listening to the whole story, the condo association was paying to have it pumped, is that what was, was paying to pump it?
In fairness to Attorney Petrus, the poor guy, hasn't even been able to make his presentation, because we keep asking questions.
Okay, here's the video.
You know.
This is, basically, it was taken in early September, and the situation is about the same.
This is after the repairs.
This is.
After the freeze, right?
No, this is basically when Sutton Pond reinstalled new pipe to replace the frozen pipe, but if you can see, there's basically sewage coming out of that collar area. Okay? Now, we approached, basically in a no-one situation, we keep running it, it's going to do this, if we turn it off, it's going to overflow unless my client pumps it, which is very expensive.
So can, you know, can I just ask one other, what, what is the, what is the position of the Sutton Pond Association or group, I mean, if you deal with them and they're brothers, and I know they got notice, and I'm assuming that some of the folks here?
Their position that it's our problem?
Well, you, you, what you believe their position is, and if we have a spoken?
They have said in, in no uncertain terms that it's our problem, they're not going to build us the Taj Mahal, that they did what they were required to do under the arbitration award, it was finished in two thousand and twelve, they will probably even state that we have interfered in letting them install certain things, but they've made repeated representations to us that it was completed, when they keep on coming back and asking to install this and asking to install this, okay? It's never had, had a proper heating system, it currently does not have a proper heating system. For over, for over fifteen years, it has had a baseboard heater with a simple plug, they've upgraded it in two thousand and twelve, but it still has a plug, which is against code.
It's an electric, electric plug?
It was an electric plug, yes.
Like one-ten volts?
Yes. I mean, basically, it was a better than a baseboard heater, but it was still something you could get at a Home Depot.
Yeah, everything else is Nima, point.
But.
All right, I understand that. So is there a representative view from Sutton Pond?
Yes, my name is Chuck Vanderland, and I represent the trustees of Sutton Pond.
Okay, welcome.
Let me just respond briefly. I guess I'd start by saying virtually everything that has been alleged factually Sutton Pond would disagree with. This case had been going on for a long time, the litigation filed by Mr. Smith started in nineteen ninety-nine. He was alleging then that there was a problem with the special permit from ninety-two. Later, there's a settlement agreement that gets adopted by the court and enforced by the court in August of oh-four, that settlement agreement was one in which he waived various claims, including that one, that there was something wrong about the permitting process.
Can I just ask you a couple of questions, because we, I just want to cut to the chase, because it's like, after the settlement agreement award, did you install a new pump system?
Two new pumps were installed after the.
Honor, about, honor about when?
Pardon?
When, when were they installed?
They were installed in two thousand and twelve. Sutton Pond purchased them, the, the court agreement happens in oh-four, the arbitrator's award and two clarifications of that award happened in oh-five. Sutton Pond purchased the pumps to specifically adhere to the arbitrator's requirements in two thousand and five. Mr. Smith made it his business not to allow any sort of permit to be issued for the wiring of those pumps, so those pumps sat on a shelf until the system failed in oh-nine.
So did you pull a permit to install the pumps?
The engineering report, one of the things they haven't talked about, is the engineers that supervise the work said, this is an existing system, this is a repair of an existing system, no permits are necessary, and they were told that by town officials.
Who, which town officials told that?
The United Compressor, who produced a certificate saying Sutton Pond has adhered to everything it had to do under the arbitration award, and those pumps were installed in compliance with all applicable codes, they were the ones that had the contact with town officials, I frankly don't know who they spoke to.
United Engi, okay, so you replaced a couple of pumps, right?
That was what we were obligated to do under the arbitration award. And the arbitration award, you asked this question about who owns that pump, the arbitrator's award was very specific, it said Sutton Pond installed these two types of injector pumps, installed two pumps of this type, rather. installed two pumps of this type, rather. Adopt a, um, maintenance contract to keep them up and running for a period of three years. When that is over, all of the responsibility for this system lies with Mr. Smith. Those got installed in two thousand and twelve. In July of two thousand and fourteen, Mr. Smith put padlocks on the building to prevent United Compressor from being able to go in and do its inspection, it was doing, I think, quarterly inspections. We made very clear to them in writing, look, if you want to cut short that three-year period, that's up to you. But from and after this date, July three of two thousand and fourteen, that pumping system is your responsibility, not ours. We put in the new pumps, we got the three-year contract, and now you won't let our engineers in to take a look, so, the short answer...
Why would your engineers be going in if you're saying it's his pump system?
Well, we were still, in July of two thousand and fourteen, we still had about eight months left on our three-year maintenance contract, so they were doing what they were supposed to do, they were going in, doing the periodic inspections to make sure it was okay. His locks prevented...
Whose pipes are they, does he own just the pumps, does he own the pipes?
The arbitrator's award says he's responsible for the system, it says, there is, with one exception, this is Sutton Pond's full responsibility, which was put in the two pumps, have the three-year maintenance contract. The only exception to that is the arbitrator said, well, the settlement agreement actually said, that got approved by the court, if there is ever a need to replace that pipe that runs from these pumps back up to Main Street, if that pipe has to be replaced, then Sutton Pond and Mr. Smith share, that costs fifty-fifty. Everything else...
Six hundred and eighty similar forced main pipe, right?
Yes, if that had to be replaced, the settlement agreement says the two parties share it fifty-fifty. Everything else, it says, when Sutton Pond has put in those pumps, done the maintenance contract, and it specifically says, it is then turned over to him to be responsible for maintenance and repairs.
Did you grant him an easement for the property?
There was never an easement asked for, there was never an easement granted. Uh, I think pretty close to what Mr. Katrubis...
Your property, his, his pump in the box?
Yeah, I think what Mr. Katrubis said is probably pretty close, that there is some kind of, uh, pre-existing license to be able to continue that process. I mean, it was not, both parties represented by counsel, they have a eleven-page, single-spaced settlement agreement with about twenty different exhibits, there was no formal easement that was even requested or granted.
Do we have the settlement agreement?
I'm certain...
I want you to, Mr. Brown, I can't remember, I know it was...
Like to read that.
Pretty sure it's in the packet I gave you.
Let me just go back to the most basic thing.
Chris, I thought the pump was going to the other, I thought that pump was drained out to the main pump, not the pump in the courtyard. I mean, not the...
Yes, it still goes up to Main Street. This pump goes to Main Street.
So why would you be responsible for the other area?
He's not, it's, I mean, as, that whole settlement agreement simply had to do with this pump. Actually, there's some other issues about parking and stuff, but the only sewer part of it had to do with this pump. And the agreement was, if we put in the two new pumps, we put in place the three-year maintenance contract, then it's his system. We did those two things, and we did them in compliance with the arbitrator's award. The basic thing I wanted to go back to is, I think, maybe the most fundamental one, which, although we are not a party to this proceeding, conceptually, the only thing that is being sought here is for the building inspector to inject himself into this, and he has declined to do that. Frankly, it's our position that he's made the right call, that this is something, these rights between these parties are governed very heavily by the settlement agreement that became the court order and by the arbitrator's award.
Are you willing to provide the settlement agreement?
Yeah, absolutely.
I see an arbitrator's award.
I can email it to you, or if you have a printer, I have it.
Well, I mean, if, you know, if you're going to give it to the board, I mean, I think it's relevant, as it relates to the building inspector's position.
I can provide you with copies of all the agreements, all of the, in the awards.
If that's not a violation of the settlement, you know, we'd like to...
To share it? No, absolutely not, and, no, one thing, the settlement agreement became the court order. There's a court order of August fourth of two thousand and four, where the Superior Court judge said, this is the court's order in this case.
Can you accompany that?
Yeah, I have a...
Put the order with it?
I have a copy of all that. As a side note, um, it was never signed by either party, but the court did adopt it as a judgment in two thousand and four.
Well, then, we'll rely on that, you know?
Just let me, just address one other thing quickly. The, as you go back into the history of this, to, to somehow allege that there were no permits and all of this was done improperly, the first occupant of this building was the town, and my understanding is the town was there for something like two or three years.
I remember when the town was there.
Yeah, so town officials had granted occupancy permits to the town to occupy the space, occupancy permits to Mr. Smith. It's not like this is some, uh, hidden thing that happened in the middle of the night, that, I mean, the town was in fact a player here.
But you have to admit, there's an issue with the way the system's working, I just saw a video that, you know...
Right now, that's Mr. Smith's problem, Sutton Pond sought to, the system was working.
That may not be for us to decide, that, it's somebody's problem, I'm not so sure it's the board of appeals problem.
No, I don't think it is, but you've been provided with a lot of allegations tonight, let me just tell you one more about that video. Sutton Pond, last winter, after the system froze, put in, with Sutton Pond paying for it, put in new pipes to replace ones that were damaged. And then, uh, Mr. Smith, who's always been frustrated about this relationship with Sutton Pond, announced unilaterally in August, and the system was working fine, no complaints. He announces unilaterally in August, giving us about two days' notice by mail, you've never done what I wanted you to do here, I'm shutting off the system, and there will be sewage flowing out over the ground, and, uh, you'll have to live with it. Then, when he is told you should not be shutting off, and I think he sends a copy of that to some town officials, he's told, do not shut it off, probably by Mr. Cifori, then suddenly, there's a video, then he says, now I've discovered the system is leaking. After he threatens to shut it off and flood the area, now he comes up with a video that says for the first time, he's discovered a leak. I mean, you should take with, with a lot of circumspection, everything that's been said to you tonight.
You know, look, okay, it's not a court of law, right? We are fined as a fact to a certain extent, to whatever's relevant. So, you know, what would be very helpful to this board is if you guys could figure this out, all right? By the next meeting, that would be very helpful, as far as from where I'm sitting. Is that going to happen? I don't know.
No, it's...
But short of that, I think that would be helpful, because otherwise, I think your attorney's going to have to provide us with some kind of legal memorandum showing us our authority, and I do think that there is issues here that are relevant to the board of health and or conservation that may or may not help you. Okay, I need the settlement agreement, the board needs the settlement agreement, I need to understand some of the missing facts here. You know, I understand, these are issues that, the stakes are high for people, and the people get emotionally charged. But at the end of the day, it, you know, it's a, it's a sewer issue that needs to get fixed.
We understand that too.
You guys have a, you guys have, this is not your first rodeo, okay, so I would ask you to finish what you started. Okay, that's what I'd ask you.
You can give it a try, it's just, there's a high level of frustration because Sutton Pond has tried hard for a long time to solve this.
And I don't want to be part of the frustration on any level, you know, I mean, I don't think this board does either.
No, I understand.
But we're going to do our job in terms of the hearing.
Okay, I will get you a copy, or each of us, we'll get a copy of that settlement agreement.
I have it on my laptop, I can print it up and file it in.
Yeah, so file it, get it to us, and we, you know, hit the zoning office too, you know?
Is email, is email okay, do you want it in paper form?
How many pages is it?
Uh, the settlement agreement is about sixteen pages, the arbitration award's about five or six in total.
Well, you should, you know, why don't you, why don't you file it at the zoning office, and then we'll, they'll figure out...
Okay, so, seven copies?
That would be helpful.
Can you send a attorney email as well?
Yes.
Sure, Mr. Brown would like a copy of it, if he hasn't received one.
Just so she can, in, in the event instead of her scan, and she can just pass that on?
I will both.
Okay, that'd be great.
Just for the record, I asked, well, well, previous document, I asked for this stuff in, on the record, and I never received it.
Yeah, I, I remember, okay. So, so, you know, so here's the thing, so Merrill, is I, is I new zoning assistant?
Yeah, she's made contact with me.
Okay, so today's her first day on the job, and thankfully Angela is here helping, so this has been, you know, we welcomed her earlier, but, you know, if you didn't get the documents to her, you know, I'd like to continue this hearing, to be able to look that stuff over, see what happens. I don't, I'm not, I can't make a decision tonight.
Right, I understand that.
We'll do whatever you want, you want us to close the hearing and vote it tonight, I'll close it and vote it tonight. But, you know, or the board will probably do what they want.
If the board doesn't feel that they have the authority to make the decision, then obviously it's going to be denied. So, I don't, I don't...
Mr. Karch, how do you feel about this, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, how do you feel about this, do you feel like you have enough information on this tonight?
I can't offer this, my, I can't offer a decision tonight.
Yeah, I, I don't mind briefing this issue.
Well, let's just figure out where everybody is, how do you feel about it?
I guess I would agree with that, I don't, I don't see, I don't see our jurisdiction clear.
All right, it belongs, I'm sorry, it belongs in the floor, it's not here.
We have nothing to do with this, I agree with that, let the courts bang it out, it's not our job, not our job.
This is a four-to-one, this is a four-to-one type of, I mean, for, to prevail, it's a super majority. An appeal, an appeal of a decision of a building inspector is, requires four votes. So, you know, I'm willing to, to do my due diligence, I don't know where I'm falling on it yet, I mean, I respect the position that, that the building inspector has taken. You know, I, I did talk to town council about it, but I'm willing to do my due diligence, and if you want to submit more stuff to review, I'm happy to do it.
That, that's news, what, what did town council say, beyond my house?
Well, town, I mean, I would be privileged in a way, what did town council say?
Do I get to know, do I get to know?
You can call town council, yeah.
I can call town council, that's the solution, so, one of us called town council and burnt the town's money and time?
I don't know, I don't know, what town council said was, the building inspector was going to issue their letter.
What'd the town council say?
Got it in the letter, the last letter.
The last letter?
Yeah, I got two letters, that's what he said, that's what I did, so...
I do not have the authority, that one?
Yeah, okay.
It's not uncommon to call town council, and I also called them with respect to...
It's not, it's also not a state secret to understand what town council said.
You know, honest to God, I just forgot about it, I was not trying to keep a state secret, I'm trying to just run the meeting. We also called them about the procedural aspects from last, from last month, as it related to the notice requirements, whether it be for the association or all the members of, um, of the condo, and the standing requirement as it related to the enforcement request to the building inspector. Because the initial application was procedurally defective, I think we talked about that on the record last month. And so that was the extent of my discussions with town council.
At this point, what I would suggest is, we, you know, I have no problem briefing the matter. Uh, and then, you know, at some later time, we can either withdraw, or we can have another meeting, or we can show up at the next meeting, I should say.
Well, I'm willing to support a continuance to look the stuff over, I mean, you get two members that aren't with you at the moment, if you want to have another hearing on it.
I'd like to schedule it.
It's up to you.
And then, you know, if anything happens in the meantime, we settle, or whatever happens, then we take it off calendar.
Yeah, so, I mean, um, if you wanted to withdraw our petition, I think the board would need to vote it at that point, because we opened the hearing.
I, I think he said he wanted to continue.
No, he talked about withdrawal too.
No, right now, I'm not contemplating withdrawing, right now, I'd like a continuance, so I can brief, basically, to see if you do have the authority to overturn, you know, to even make a decision.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, if that's what you want to do, I mean, if the board supports a continuance, I support a continuance.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue to next month.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
She gave you the waiver, right?
Uh, oh, I have to sign it.
Yep, yep.
And then, if you so choose. So then, the only other matters on the agenda for tonight, that's continued to our next regular meeting is, um, in November. There were miscellaneous correspondence that came in with respect to Chapper and the Attorney General, and then, as it related to the Yarsgood application from the planning board. My response to them was simply that we had already issued our decision and had heard, had heard that matter. And I, I think they sent that out to all of us. And, uh, that's it.